So pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. And the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place due to the outbreak of the coronavirus 2019. This meeting of the town of Berlin's Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technological means. The town of Berlin will use best efforts to post an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's webpage, the town's YouTube channel, and approval minutes will be posted on my town government. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to attend the virtual meeting may attend via the Zoom webinar platform in one of two ways. One with both audio and video access. Or two by telephone audio only. And as I said last time, should any of the board members have technical difficulties and lose access to the meeting, the meeting will recess for a short period of time to see whether access can be restored. If not, the meeting will be continued to another date agreed by the board or adjourned until next scheduled meeting. So I'll call this meeting to order at 7:04. And as I said, the meetings of the Board of Selectmen are generally recorded for transmission on both Berlin Cable Television Access Channel and YouTube. Your voice and image and/or telephone number may be recorded. We have approval of minutes of April 21st.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Any comments or questions? Nope, seeing none, we'll take a vote. Keith, aye.
Voice hockey, aye.
Stone, aye.
Right, motion passes. We do have a letter of correspondence to Maloney Properties, who owns or manages Northbrook Village. Margaret, did you have anything you wanted to add before we?
I just want to thank Mary for drafting this letter, and the board is certainly open to discuss it now. I think this was what, this is the type of letter that I had in mind when I made the recommendation last week that the board send one.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Seconded. I mean, Mary, you're going to be able to fill in all the highlighted areas, like the yellow displacement of ex-residents and the number of units, just to confirm?
Yes, I just need to get that information from the building commissioner.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. We'll take a vote. Keith, aye.
Voice hockey, aye.
Stone, aye.
Okay. General public comment?
Oh, question. So where there's three signatures on the line on the letter, do we all have to come down and sign it individually? Mary shaking her head, no.
I can, I can make it beat by Chris, only just by vote of the board unanimously, so to the board, that'd be easier. Okay.
I see Margaret shaking her head.
That's a grand idea.
Or we could also ask Margaret to sign on her behalf too, right?
Yes.
Already in the office?
Whatever the board prefers.
I don't mind coming down to sign it because I'll probably have some other things to come sign, right?
You are going to have other things that you need notarized and signed.
Yeah, and, and as well as Peggy and Lisa. The warrant.
I'm going to have to circulate the town meeting warrant, so whatever, whatever you guys prefer.
If we have to sign, I'll have to sign something anyways. I just wanted to limit the, the number of people going down to the town offices as much as we could, so.
Right. Okay.
That'll be signature by the chair then, okay?
I think just make a stack of what we have to sign if we have to sign the warrants anyways.
Okay.
Okay.
I can bring them around for the board to sign too if you don't want to come.
Want to pay my tax bill to Margaret?
That's a good one.
All right. Is there any general public comment? I don't see any hands raised. Okie doke. Then we'll move on. I don't believe we have any hearings, appointments, or presentations. But we do have a town administrator report.
Okay, I'll try to keep it concise. I mentioned last week that I wanted to proceed with preliminary interviews on the Council on Aging Director. The Council on Aging has designated one of its members already. The panel may grow to between three and five members, so we're, I'm working on that, I'm working on that now. The 1870 Town Hall Manager, that data hire has been postponed twice because of the health emergency. We've postponed it now to May 4th. I do have, I've sent Mary information for the offer letter that first of all would identify priorities and objectives, short-term priorities and objectives, so that she could actually hit the ground running and prepare for marketing and outreach. And of course, marketing and outreach is another priority and objective. And, and then I also want to note in the offer letter that the position, just like with all positions, is contingent on available funding. Especially given this, this particular funding source, we want to be sure that we're clear on that. So we want to be ready to roll when the buildings open, but we also need to be aware that this is a revolving fund. And so the position is dependent on those revenues.
So then Margaret, Margaret, quick question. So for that, on the 1870 Town Manager, until the town hall is open, she's not working, correct?
She hasn't started working yet. I did want her to start working in the near future so that she can actually develop a marketing plan and outreach and an outreach strategy and get the lay of the land and begin to actually start reaching out to prospective tenants, whether it's for fall or otherwise. And, and if there are small activities that can happen at the town, at the town hall, when the, when the emergency order is lifted, maybe we can start small, but I, I don't want to have to hit the ground running when everything opens up and then we're there. So, you know, I'm happy to take feedback and delay the data hire again. Or attempt to.
Are we currently paying the yen anyways for her?
Very, 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 very small amount. Yeah, she's doing very few hours there now. We have enough for the remainder, we have, we would have enough to pay the position for the full 15 hours for the remainder of this year into FY '21 at this point.
But do we want to spend that money? We are, we have no idea when the band is going to lift and when and if people are going to want to go into a public building?
Yeah. I think by the end of the week, I believe the governor was going to probably make a decision on the May 4th date. He may extend it.
Okay.
So.
Well, we're just going to have to play it by ear then. We're just going to have to play it by ear. This is just unprecedented and you know, hopefully, we'll, we'll keep moving on the pre-employment stuff to make sure that, you know, that she's assured that the board has voted unanimously for her to start. But we have to understand that this is a, an unprecedented public health emergency and we need to play it by ear. So I will, I'll work with her.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would just be concerned if she goes gung ho for some type of marketing strategy and people get it and they're like, yeah, no, you know, not going anywhere. I would rather almost, I mean, ensure her that yes, you know, we're going to bring her in when we can bring her in, but to kind of bring her in right now and really have her do anything doesn't, to me, doesn't seem like a, a useful spend of money when there's absolutely zero going on in the, in the hall.
Well, I think it's going to be a slow opening too.
Yeah.
It will be. I can't, I can't envision any large events happening there for quite some time. I mean, maybe some of the smaller classes where people can really spread out, but, but large functions, not for quite a while. All right, I'll work with her on that. Um, yeah, now with current year FY '20 grants, we have several grants that are in the works, but I do have to request extensions on two of them. I'm requesting a two-month extension on the Community Compact Grant to complete the HR, Comp and Class Study and Personnel Policies work, and I'm also requesting a two-month extension on the MVP Grant. Because everything slowed down and, and caused a delay in the work. So I'm actually contacting the state on both of those grants to try to get an extension. The benefits consulting, I've been given the board periodic updates on this. I am going to be reissuing the RFP because it became clear that the COVID-19 situation impacted respondents' ability to submit proposals. And that was for the benefits, the benefits analysis. So I am actually, I have to reject the one proposal that came in properly and reissue the request for proposals again. Um, interesting, COVID-19 has really put a, put some obstacles up here. But anyway, finance. I'm, I'm going to be presenting some recommendations to the board tonight on some of the low-hanging fruit. My revised recommendations on most expense lines are going to be presented to the board on Monday, May 4th. And then recommendations on wage lines will come on May 11th, and at that point, I hope to have wrapped it up. But we're going to be going over, we're going to be going over a lot on revenues tonight in the situation with revenues. The pre-town meeting and FY '21 budget forum has been postponed to Thursday, June 4th at 7 o'clock PM. It was initially 7:30, but I've bumped it up based on requests from some of our local official stakeholders. I don't know, has that notice been, has that notice gone out yet? I, we're gonna, we're gonna schedule it. So if we want to just put something up to say this is going to be held, more information is forthcoming, that would be, that'd be great. Thank you. The River Bridge Fiscal Impact Study, we received a draft report. I have not yet had an opportunity to thoroughly review it. But I am going to do that and report to the board next week on the findings of that study. Library Septic System, you're going to be doing some, you're going to be doing some paperwork on that tonight. Nishoba has received the plans from Evan Carloni, the project overseer. And he is reviewing them in preparation for the Board of Health's review and approval. Community Garden Ad Commission is installing a water tank there in the shed after the expenditures for the Phase 2 electrical work and the installation of the water tank. There's still going to be $4,770 left in that grant account. We expect the delivery of the Ford Transit XL 350 passenger van, the new Council on Aging van, on May 1st. The WRTA is going to be delivering a check here for the full, for the full price of the van, and we are processing an amount of $1,708 to be paid in supplemental funding for the cost of the van. And that's going to be coming from the FY '20, I, I put the wrong year on my report. It's FY '20 Formula Grant. The, on the recreational marijuana, I have spoken with yet another potential proponent. It's someone who's actually looking for proper zoning districts and things. So it seems that that proponent is in the very preliminary stages of searching for a possible retail location. The 64 Banner or the C3 Industries proponent has submitted a waiver request to the CCC. They shared that with us to allow a virtual community outreach meeting. But as I mentioned last week to the board, I am not going to be making any recommendations to the board on any virtual community outreach meetings in Berlin until CCC guidance is issued. I don't see any, any good reason to move forward with virtual community outreach meetings when we don't know if it's going to be compliant with the state's guidance. So I'm, I'm waiting on that, and I have contacted the CCC again to find out where they're at with their guidance. On the SA Farm in Northborough, I have gotten information on the online reporting, the online complaint reporting system. And notice has been, we've put out notice on that to residents on the town website, town's Facebook page, and I think that's been shared with other Facebook pages as well. So people should use that as a tool, report, report their complaints on odors and be as specific as possible. Report them right to the DEP. And then finally, I mentioned that the MVP Grant, we're going to be requesting a two-month grant extension. It was mentioned to us by CMRPC. I know that there's been a discussion about street numbers or house numbers. CMRPC threw out the idea of including that in our Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Plan as a potential future funding source for street numbers, if that's the direction we're going to be going in. And that's all I have for tonight.
Just had one quick question.
Sure.
Have they discussed what, um, we're going to do with the old van? Are we are going?
No. When we receive, I would anticipate that the board is going to be declaring that surplus on May 4th. So upon receipt of the new van, the board does have to declare that surplus, and then we would be disposing of it in accordance with the town's policy.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions for Margaret? Peg?
No, I'm saving, I'm saving them.
Oh, boy.
All right. Okay, moving on to old business. We have an update on fiscal year 2020 and fiscal year 21, 2021 budgets.
I have to repeat again that FY '20, we put out that, that administrative spending, well, it's Spending Freeze Administrative Directive pretty early on. We put that out on March 25th. And departments have been, have been compliant with that and have been submitting essential spending request forms when needed. So we've had a few questions here and there, but overall, people are understanding that our revenues are uncertain in the fourth quarter this year and into next year. So I'll move right along to, and if we could, I know that June is here and she's part of the administrative, I think, I thought June was here, she's part of the administrative finance team. She may want to speak to some of this revenues discussion. So if I could, I am going to share a screen here that is our budget, that is our revenue summary sheet, and I'm going to go with you down, down the list. Oops. Okay, can you, can everybody see this?
Yep.
Okay. So on your, on your revenues, this is the revenue sources sheet. We call it, I call it revenue summary sheet. Our early projections you see in this column are FY '21 revenue projections pre-COVID-19 totaled $14,456,512. The administrative finance team met last week for quite some time and went through all of our revenue sources and paid particular attention to our local receipts in areas that we anticipate being impacted as a result of COVID-19. And so those, the reductions that, in the projections total So our total adjusted revenues would be $14,308,370. And if we scroll down a little bit here, you can see that the original budget requests for FY '21 totaled $14,413,299. With the adjusted revenue projections, that would, that would create a shortfall in revenues of $104,928. With the adjustments and the quote, we call it the level fund budget column. And that level fund budget column right now totals $14,226,470. And only, only budgets on the town side, excluding all intergovernmental assessments, have been, have been scrubbed, reviewed. Some may stay level funded, some may have to be increased due to nondiscretionary costs. But again, the total in that column is now $14,226,470. With the available revenues, adjusted revenues of $14,308,370, we currently have a revenue surplus of $82,323. Okay, so that's the, that's a start. We're going to move over to the local receipts page right here. Where you see the parentheses, where you see the numbers highlighted here are the revenue areas that we anticipate impacts in. So we'll start with unrestricted general government aid. Unrestricted general government aid is derived largely from lottery revenues. And we have learned as of now, I should say as of last week, lottery revenues were projected down 22.8%. So that's why we put this reduction. We just matched the state's anticipated decline in lottery revenues in UGA, and so we took $50,178 from the original budget projections. And further, with, with any state aid, I, we think, I think June may feel otherwise, but typically, we don't get the state budget until sometime in August. It's been as late as September. This year, it could be, it could be anytime this fall, but it's not going to be early. So the rule of thumb here is that we're going to have to be conservative on our state revenue projection. So we're going with the 22.8% now. All right, so that's state aid. Now down to local receipts. Again, we looked at all, we looked at state, we looked at the state's projections in licensing and permitting. We looked at current year activity, we looked at prior year's activity, and we looked at potential future years' activity, given the decline that the state is projecting. So first of all, motor vehicle excise. In any economic downturn, people tend to hold on to their vehicles longer. It just, it just happens. And so we do anticipate that people will hold on to their vehicles longer. And when they hold on to the vehicles longer, the excise values decrease. And so when the bills come out, the, the cars are valued at a lower amount. So we anticipate that a reduction of about, we anticipate seeing a reduction of about 5% in motor vehicle excise revenues in the coming year. We also want to say, and this is going to tie into penalties and fees further down on the list, that with the extension that the board approved last week on motor vehicle excise payments to June 29th, that means that penalties and interest are now going to be received in FY '21. So we may, if people cannot pay on time, their penalties and interest are actually going to be imposed in FY '21. That's not, that's not typical. Usually, we see those penalties and interest coming in in the current year because the deadline is generally well ahead of the end of the fiscal year. Any questions on motor vehicle excise? Okay, next, meals and rooms, meals and room excise. The, this is optimist, this is optimistically projecting, and I don't want to say optimistically, this is projecting that we may see some increased, some increased activity with our restaurants and hotel in the second half of FY '21. In rooms tax, just, rooms tax revenues just began being received this year. So we had our first disbursements of, of funding from the state on the rooms excise this fiscal year. So we don't have a full year's trend to go on as far as activity at the hotel. We know there's not much now, but we do anticipate that things would, at this moment in time, we anticipate that things would pick up in the second half of FY '21. And at this point, we feel that a $5,000 reduction is reasonable. The next one is interest on personal property, real estate, and excise. We just, we just talked about that. Even, even with the FY '21 collections, including some of the FY '20 bills, we still think that's going to be lagging. It has been, it has been lagging in this fiscal year already. So we think that's going to continue, and we've, we've projected a decrease of 30% there. The next one is an anomaly. In lieu of taxes, this is a payment that we receive for watershed lands from DCR. And the payments have come in higher than was originally projected. And this is a formulaic payment, so it does, it does increase with other towns' equalized valuation. And we anticipate there being an $8,000 increase in that line from what we originally projected. Licenses and permits. This is all of our licenses and permits. This includes everything from alcohol licenses to dog licenses, and then the biggest component of this being building permits. There is a decline this year in activity. We're seeing that now. And we anticipate there, that it's going to continue to decline in FY '21. So there's a significant reduction in license and permit activity this year that we expect is going to continue into FY '21. So we're anticipating a 46.2% reduction in that, or $103,000 reduction primarily from building permit losses.
That would also, would that include the fact that the apartments will be done and we got a huge revenue from that?
Yes, it does, it does. So the, I don't want to say it was artificially high, but it was high because of those apartments and because of the major development activity, and that's tapering off.
Yeah, so we would have taken a hit on that regardless.
All right, and then we have fines and forfeits. This includes civil citations that are issued for bylaw violations. It includes library late book charges, and it includes court fines. Courts, courts are closed right now. Makes it extremely difficult to be collecting any fines, but there is, we do anticipate that it's going to take a while to ramp up enforcement again and to actually get those court cases seen. And so we anticipate further reductions in this line of about 25% heading into FY '21. And then finally, interest on investments. I think it goes without saying that with the Federal Reserve's reduced prime rate, our, our banking institutions are also going to be reducing their interest rate on our investments. And not only that, if we are cash strapped at any point, we are going to have less money in the bank to, to gain those invest, those, that, that interest. So we are anticipating a 20% reduction in that line. So an overall reduction in local receipts of 14 and a half percent or $148,050. Any questions on any of this?
Margaret, do you have any idea on occupancy for or interest in those apartments? I mean, are they going to go up without anybody to move into them? Or has Matt come back to say, you know, hey, we, we had, you know, I don't know, making it up, 35 applications and now we have?
Yeah. I don't know, I, I can't answer that question yet. I can look into it. I can try to find answers. I only know that, I, I only know about interest in an occupancy, or potential occupancy in the first, in the first couple of buildings. So I don't know what kind of, what kind of occupancy trends they're looking at, but I can look into that.
No, no, you don't need to. It was just while you were on there and talking about the hotel rooms, the apartments. I didn't know if you knew.
That's actually good to, that's actually good to, good to look into because if we're looking at something like motor vehicle excise, where there are going to be more cars in town, they're not going to be billed for motor, their motor vehicle excise until the following year. So it would impact FY '22. So at the rate at which those are occupied, it's going to have some sort of impact on, on some of our local fees. So I'll, I'll look into that.
I would assume that they're not going to occupy as quickly because of COVID once again. I think they were supposed to start in spring, weren't they? And, you know, they're a little bit delayed with the building because of COVID, and then people are not going to be moving for the same reason, but.
Yeah, maybe not quite as quickly, so. Yeah, maybe not quite as quickly, so. Yeah, I've, I've got to check to have a better sense of, of that. And then the only other thing on this, on this page that you're also going to see on the budget sheet is the use of assessors overlay surplus. This is nine thousand dollars that is going to be used for Department of Revenue five oh four utility appraisals. This is the first time that this particularly, particular utility appraisal system has to be used. And there is a cost to that. So that is going to be fully funded in the revaluation line. From assessors overlay surplus to one-time funding source for a one-time expense. And that's the, those are the only changes on the revenue sheet. So are we good with this one?
Everybody?
Let's move on.
All right.
Okay, so. All right, here we are in the, on the budget. You can see I left columns open to show the board's prior actions on various budget lines. And Finance Committee's actions on, on various budget lines. For today, I am going to be, I want to get my sheet so I can see the entire thing here. I'm going to be going through. Mostly, mostly lines that the, the board and Finance Committee had previously approved. I really don't see any other way of going about this than to actually go through revised recommendations for all budget lines again. So we'll call it post, post-COVID budget recommendations. So first one. Is line two moderator, I'm sorry, line one. This is moderator salary. This is the only wage line that I am making any recommendations on tonight. Only because the amount was specifically requested and has remained level funded since FY twenty. So I'm going to recommend that that remain level funded based on the request for FY twenty-one and prior year's funding. Next line, this is a new line. This is a new consulting line. I think I've previously, previously explained that Weston and Sampson site assessment charges have been coming out of legal expenses. This line creates a proper. Funding line from which to pay those consulting costs and any other high priority consulting costs we have. Although this would be, this twenty thousand dollars would be the bulk, would represent the. Primarily payments to Weston and Sampson with very little left for other consulting.
Margaret, is that Maplewood?
That is Maplewood. Yep, that's Weston and Sampson. So yeah, I'm still working on, on reviewing that. And Weston and Sampson also has been in touch with DEP about the, it's the PSF testing that might be required in the future. So we're, I'm trying to monitor that as best as I can in the midst of all this. So that's where that is, yes. The next line, eight thousand two hundred ninety dollars. That is the board's expense line. Much of this has been shifted to, oh, actually the ten thousand dollar reduction is because. There were consulting costs built into this in FY twenty that will no longer be needed in FY twenty-one. So that is a big reduction from FY twenty. The next one, line. Line eight. This is the town administrator expense line. I had intended to pick up shredding service costs. From the fire department's budget and put it in a more appropriate, put it under a more appropriate line for townwide document shredding. But at this point, I'm going to be talking with the chief about getting rid of shredding services entirely and seeing if we can just. Is seeing if we can just do something with, with shredders in-house or do a, rather than doing a service. Do something on an as-needed basis. So something that would save costs. So I'm just looking to level fund that now. The next line. The reserve fund. Yes, I highly recommend that this remain level funded because with cuts in other budget lines, the need may be greater. To request reserve fund transfers in future years if we find that there is insufficient funding in some lines. The next one is line fourteen. This is the independent, the annual independent audit that's performed for the town. I had noted earlier that I was going to try to get a lower cost than the already reduced cost for FY twenty-one. And we were able to get another two thousand dollars off that. So I am recommending twenty-six thousand dollars for the audit cost for FY twenty-one. The next one is reval, revaluation expenses. I mentioned the utility appraisals that are required. This line was, was initially requested at sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars. The revised, the revised number is twenty-five thousand seven hundred dollars to add in that nine thousand dollars for the utility appraisals. And again, the nine thousand dollars is coming from assessors overlay surplus. The next line, fifty thousand dollars. That I am recommending, recommending be level funded from the current years, oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry, it's not level funded from the current year's budget. It's reduced by fifteen thousand dollars because we've moved those consulting costs outside and put them into their own line. So I am, I am recommending that this remain at fifty thousand dollars. I think that we, so far we're tracking okay. This year, we do know we have some additional costs for attendance at town meeting. And we haven't been billed yet for the town meeting warrant review. So I, we think that we're going to be able to manage with the fifty thousand dollars into next year. Next one, this is personnel committee expenses. They had five thousand dollars in their FY, five thousand two hundred dollars in their FY twenty line. The five thousand dollars was for some consulting services. I think it was to pick up. Any extra costs that the community compact grant wouldn't cover for the HR consultant. So that's going to be going back down to two hundred dollars and that is for MMHR dues. The next one is data system expenses. I am recommending that this be funded at eighty-six thousand fifty-nine dollars. The reason for this is because we have several Windows seven computers that need replacement. Microsoft is not supporting Windows seven systems anymore. And we need to continue to do replacement to Windows ten systems in order to maintain system security.
Are we looking at a, do we have a contract on that yet?
No, 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 we won't have a contract on that until the money's appropriated. We currently have current year lease agreements with Dell on some leased computers. This would be a separate contract.
Okay, I was just wondering if we were going to look at a replacement. Because I think in the long run, we, we need a, a replacement contract so that.
Yeah, and by building in, by building in the lease agreements into the line, we could have. I mean, we could establish a computer replacement schedule so that we can always be assured to have reasonably up-to-date computer systems. The next one is, all right, the next, I'm going to group these. These are, these lines right here. Are elections and registration. I am recommending that these remain as requested by the town clerk for FY twenty-one because this is a state election year. And she has provided costs of. For personnel and equipment and supplies that she needs to run those state elections. The next one, Board of Appeals part-time wages. That was previously at two thousand two hundred dollars in FY twenty. And it was requested to be the same in FY twenty-one. I'm recommending that that be reduced to zero and that two thousand two hundred dollars be moved into the inspections line. So that that position of inspections land use clerk can be paid from one source instead of multiple sources. It's going to be much more efficient to pay the, the, the position from one source. The next one is. Agricultural commission expenses. I am recommending that that be reduced to the FY twenty level. This does, they had requested funding to, for T one eleven siding and things to finish the shed. It was supposed to be a one-year request. This is either going to require funding from donations or the shed would remain. Less than one hundred percent finished in FY twenty-one. The next two lines that I am recommending are level funding for the electricity line and level funding for the, the heating oil line. We're going to be looking at locking in prices for heating oil as soon as we possibly can because it is so low now. So we're going to try to lock in at the lowest rate possible and potentially save some money there. But in order to, in order to be safe, we're going, I, my recommendation at this point is to level fund it.
Can I give a question? Sure. Margaret, I know it's been a gigantic thorn in my side. Has there been any movement on what we can do? To the town barn, which is just a giant suck of money either for oil and or electricity?
The option, the option that we are going, whoops, I'm sorry, I just jumped down. The options that we are going to have are going to rely on some sort of funding source peg. So it's going to have to be some sort of green communities funding where we put in. I don't know, you could do some sort of a heat pump system potentially or maybe ground mount solar, maybe something else. But it is going to require, it is going to require us to seek some sort of funding to be able to do that.
Okay, thanks.
Hey. But we'll keep that, we'll keep that in the forefront as, as some, as a measure for immediate savings. Next is. The plumbing, the, oh, I'm sorry, these are, these are actually two more wage lines. I forgot about these. These are the plumbing gas inspector and the electrical inspector, both of which are paid entirely from offset receipts. So from their permit fees, they are paid these amounts. These amounts are, these amounts match the funding on the revenue side from offset receipt. So it's a wash, okay? They would not make a hundred thousand dollars if they didn't bring in a hundred thousand dollars, for example. Next. Eighty-five thousand streetlights. This level funds. This level funds streetlights at the FY twenty level. Unfortunately, we don't have a full one-year his, we haven't been able to track a full year with the new LED lights. But. So I, I would prefer to be safe to keep it level funded. If we do find, we've only actually had a few months with them. So if we do find over time that there is money remaining, we are going to, because we own the fixtures. We are going to need to have some sort of supply of replacement fixtures and ballasts and things. In order to replace failed streetlights. So I'm recommending that that remain level.
Yeah, hopefully we should see significant reduction in that area though.
I was on the wrong line to begin.
Yeah.
That was snow and ice expenses. Okay, so nine thousand six hundred dollars. We did request the twelve thousand six hundred to be able to buy a few spare parts. But we are level funding it at ninety-six hundred dollars and we'll see where we go. The eighty-five thousand dollars is an amount that cannot be reduced. That's snow and ice expenses. So I'm recommending that we level fund that rather than increase it in any way. The next one is a bigger one. This is veteran services benefits line. Currently, that the veteran services department is only paying two beneficiaries. That number can change at any time. It was, but at this point. He has confirmed that we could reduce, we could reduce the line to eleven thousand dollars. For the beneficiaries that are being paid right now. So I am, I am taking his confirmation. I'm recommending that we reduce this to eleven thousand dollars. But it's really important that this could change at any time. And when a new beneficiary comes in, we have to pay. There is no waiting. So it could potentially mean that reserve fund transfers have to be requested and such. But we are going to just level fund this based on the current, the current situation. Well, I'm recommending that we do. The next one is. Line. Line ninety-seven. This is the festive events line. And to be perfectly honest, I think that a line like this for festive events, which I think is wonderful. But I think this one should be reduced prior to other. Lines that are critical for town operations. So I think five hundred dollars could get us something. Not as much as twenty-one hundred dollars could get us, but I think this one warrants a reduction based on the, the financial situation we're, we're facing at the moment.
I can dig out my old Christmas tree that I used for Christmas in Berlin for the Lions Club and just kind of like run up and down the street every once in a while.
It also seems like that might more appropriately belong under recreation. You know, that's sort of.
Potentially, and recreation, recreation could certainly request those, those funds too. So I just, I just couldn't see keeping it at twenty-one.
Behind that, that's entirely gone at this point. It's been repurposed in multiple ways, but where that started is not where that ended up.
With the festive events? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll look further at that. The next, the next line I am recommending is to level fund the interest, debt service interest. This is the interest payment regardless of what we determine. Or what the board and Finance Committee determine should be paid on the ladder truck principle. We have to pay the current year's interest, so I'm recommending level funding that. And to be perfectly honest, I am still struggling with whether to recommend paying off the ladder truck entirely. Or paying down the ladder truck. So I'm still looking at various options before I make a recommendation on that. You know, in one sense, it would be great to get it off the tax levy once and for all. And to avoid four thousand dollars in interest payments next year. On the other hand, which is what we intended earlier on. On the other hand, that if we only pay down one year on the ladder truck. We are able to hold on to about a hundred and fifteen thousand in Highland Commons Public Safety mitigation funds. For another, maybe much more needed purpose this year if we don't pay down a ladder truck. So I'm still going back and forth with that. I'll be back with a recommendation on the, on the principal line. The next one is the CMR PC assessment. This is the only, this is one of only three lines in the intergovernmental expenditures category that I'm prepared to make a recommendation on tonight. This is a very small cost for the, for the massive amount of services that are provided by CMR PC. This, and it's only nineteen dollars more than FY twenty. I absolutely recommend that this be funded at this amount. The next line in intergovernmental expenditures is the asset bet capital assessment. The reason I'm recommending this is because this is debt service. This is not going to be a discretionary cost. So I am recommending that we pay the debt service, our portion of asset bets debt service. That we're required to. And then the next one is Tejantos capital assessment and that too represents debt service. And this is the town's portion that we would be required to pay. So I am recommending that that be paid. And then finally, in the last, in the last section, these are nondiscretionary costs. In large part, I have confirmed insurance amounts. And the amounts that we've provided, most of them have been reduced since FY twenty because we've, because the school has gone to. Under the district's coverage, I'm recommending that all of these be funded at the prior recommended amounts. And that is it for tonight. Questions?
Okay.
Comments?
Well done. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next week, we've got, next week, we've got expense, expense lines. All of those in this particular column that were marked with an asterisk, I'll be bringing those next week.
Need these approved officially for tonight?
We need these. If, if the board's ready to approve them, that would be wonderful if you could take care of that.
Motion, motion to approve.
Do your second.
I will second it.
Go ahead.
What?
Through, through the chair.
Go ahead, you can second it.
You did?
No, no, I said you can.
Okay, I did. Margaret, did you have something?
And through the chair, I just want to know, I've gone through the entire presentation. I just didn't know if June had anything else that she needed to, she wanted to add.
No, that sounds about, we've covered everything.
Okay. Okay. So, we've got a motion and a second on the table. Let's take a vote. Keith, aye.
Waisaki, aye.
Don't I? Again, thank you, June. Thank you, Margaret, for everything that you've done. It's very nice to see, you know, somebody's thumb firmly on this and an amazing job that you've done with what you're, what we're facing with COVID and just, it's refreshing to see pushback and people saying no when the hand goes up for, I want, I want, I want. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Shall we move on to the Berlin Library Septic Project?
Through the chair. The board has a couple of forms that are going to need to be voted for, authorizing the chair to sign them. As Evan has explained, these forms are required. They're going to have to be filed at the Registry of Deeds because anytime an alternative technology is utilized on a property, the system owner, in this case, the town, has to, has to fill out or sign the form and have it notarized prior to the permitting. And that is, there's a notice of alternative sewage disposal system, and there's also a deed notice. The deed notice is required for this particular Presby technology because the Presby technology allows a reduced setback for installation. So, both of these forms are required to be signed in the presence of a notary and then filed at the Registry of Deeds. And I just want to add that our Board of Health or a health agent has received the design plans for the library septic system. He's going to review them. I think I mentioned this earlier. And he's going to bring them to the board to discuss the variance. So, my recommendation is that the board vote to authorize the chair to sign in the presence of a notary.
I'm moved.
And seconded.
Okay, any questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. Keith, aye.
Waisaki, aye.
Don't I.
Okay. Does that take care of both of the items? Yep.
Both of them.
Okay. I do have to say that we're very lucky to have Evan working on all of this for us and.
Can we do any like plaque of appreciation or in Evan Carloni Day or something? I mean, I obviously, yes, it's a little bit over the top. I'm sure he doesn't want the public recognition, but something.
This would have been a lot of money.
I would say, I would say put a plaque on the septic, but I don't know.
The Evan Carloni Septic System.
That's right, the Evan Carloni Septic System.
Ah, but I did see in the, not, not to get too far off track, but I did see in our draft annual town report that he and his wife had a baby this year.
Oh, they did. A little girl.
Yeah. I didn't know that. So, I guess we're all set on the library septic. We're moving on to the 2020 Annual Town Meeting warrant.
Okay. At this point, Town Council has completed the review of the warrant. And we have a total of 21 articles, including the four that are being re-presented from last year. So, I just want to go through a couple of things on the warrant just to note a few changes from the prior draft you saw. First of all, legal counsel has advised in the past that street addresses be shown on warrant. So, I did add Berlin Memorial School's street address here. It's on the front of the warrant, but I included it in the header, the initial paragraph. Next, on the plastic bad ban, the, the language that follows all warrant articles was missing on the prior drafts. So, I added or take any action relative thereto, and in parentheses, conservation commission at the end of that article. Next. We removed the article pertaining to funding payroll from free cash for the electrical and plumbing gas inspector because that is not needed. There is, there's sufficient funding in this current year to, to get through the rest of the fiscal year. So, that article's been removed and the remaining articles have been renumbered. The next, the next one on, the Town Council recommended a few additional words under the, the article, Article 19 now, Establishment of Capital Stabilization Fund. Town Council recommended adding the words, a sum of before $100 and a sum of before $4,341.16. And then for the sum total before the words $4,441.16. I have actually, based on feedback I received from Mary, I have made the words bylaw and bylaws consistently hyphenated throughout the entire warrant because that's consistent with the header of our general bylaws. So, I made it all consistent. On the special article closeout article, that's Article 20, I have added this, the, the source, the original funding source or the funding source that those balances will be turned back to, and that's going to be the general fund. That, those are the big changes. That is it.
Okay. Is this, is this a final draft?
This would be the final.
Yes, you should have the final in your, in your folder. I did see it, but I didn't know if it was the final. Okay.
Final, final, and it's on your calendar for tonight to vote to sign.
No pressure, Margaret, no pressure.
While we're, while we're talking about. Excuse me?
A motion to approve the final draft.
Well, I mean, I'll second it, but I'm more interested in comments before moving to a vote. But go ahead.
No, that's, that's fine, Margaret. Did you have something you wanted to add before we take a vote?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to speak to town meeting, location and alternate locations. I think now between what Mary has researched and what we've researched as far as locations that are already allowed in the general bylaws, I think we have a number of backup plans. And I have learned from our neighboring town of Boylston, who has their town meeting at the Tohanto Regional High School Auditorium, that they've added language in their warrant that reads at the Tohanto Regional High School Auditorium or another location on the grounds thereof. And so, they're very specific as to the auditorium of the Tohanto High School. We just say at Berlin Memorial School. So, I didn't know if the board wanted to expand the language in the warrant to read at Berlin Memorial School or another location on the grounds thereof. Either way, if we find that, not either way, if we find that we have to move, if the moderator has to call, open the meeting, and then recess to a, to another date, time and place, we are going to, the, the location's going to change. I mean, we just can't predict what's going to happen there. That's going to be a, a measure of the moderator's declaration after consulting with the board and public safety. So, we have a number of options here. I would recommend that the warrant be posted as is. I think at Berlin Memorial School encompasses the parcel itself.
Yeah, I agree.
And Margaret, I went down to Berlin Memorial over the weekend. There's about 70-ish actual lined parking spots in the front where mostly on the side where the parents drop off, in the front where the buses loop around. People park near the ball field. They park a little bit further down in the soccer field. There's nothing lined there and they park on the grass. But if you're looking for actual spaces, spaces, you've got about 70.
I, I mean, they park all over the place, you know, when we have town meetings. So, I bet we could get close to 100 spaces or 100 cars there.
Well, I'm just thinking, for some reason, if we ever had to go move it to like a Saturday and go outside, you know, if you had the front where the buses drop off and the side where the parents drop off, if there's speaker systems, you could have people here. And of course, it would be a nightmare, people wanting to get up and talk. But at least you'd have a sound system in place, kind of.
Do it like a drive-in.
There you go.
Have people sit right in front of their own cars.
Flash their lights on and off when they have a question.
And do it right from the gazebo.
Right, right. All right. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other comments or questions on the motion? Okay, then we'll take a vote. Keith, aye.
Waisaki, aye.
Don't I.
All right. Thank you very much. That's a vote. The review of the draft 2019 Annual Town Report.
I know, through the chair, the date on which the board is to direct the printing, the immediate printing and mailing of the annual or town report is May 11. So, the board has received a draft, compiled draft reports. And I know that I've gotten comments and questions from Peg on her initial review of the report. And I'm going to be passing those along to the Annual Town Report Committee. I don't know if anybody else has anything you want me to convey?
I did put together an email, and I believe Mary passed it on to Lori and Barry.
So, Margaret, what are we going to do for dates? Because, I mean, with the exception of the, the Udi Boomin instead of the Judy Boomin, but the Udi Boomin, there weren't any other typos that I found. But obviously, a bolt load of missing information that's been identified with the red label. So, if today is the 27th, and if it's going to print on the 11th, let me pull up the calendar. That means technically, the town report people would need to have everything to them, I'd say by the 29th or 30th at the latest, so that we can have it back the weekend of May 1st to either vote on it on the 4th or maybe put another meeting on the agenda, maybe the 7th, kick it out a little bit. I mean, I don't want to short Lori time, but there is a ton of information that is, has been identified as missing out of that town report. So, either it goes as is or it goes without. I mean, we're kind of running out of options.
I haven't actually looked at it, but normally, the last things to come in actually come from Barry.
Lisa, there's a ton on here. There's missing information for veterans, missing information for wheat, rec committee, ADA, Berlin Boylston School District, technology coordinator, salaries. There's some stuff from Dennis, capital planning, finance, there's a chunk missing. Janet, I know that you're on, I don't know if you can speak to that where that is historical dates and telephone. So, it's just not Barry. It's, it's a plethora of information that we're missing.
My, my recommendation with that is that emails go out. Typically, what would happen last year, it was Tricia. The year before, it was, you know, me or various people. But there's normally somebody who sends out an email to the folks who it's missing. Lori is probably not doing that. She probably doesn't even know who to send them to. So, somebody sent an email to rec and these other places saying.
Okay, so I, I had, I had understood that Barry was going to do that, but I'm happy to do it.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, that's what I think Lori had said in her email, that Barry was waiting on it. But again, you know, I very much enjoy Mr. Egger, but his sense of urgency seems to be a wee bit low.
It certainly doesn't hurt for somebody else to, to chime in there. And that, that would be the normal process based on my experience with it is, other than those things. And there are, there are a bunch of things that Barry does, like I said, that are typically the last to come in. But if there's rec or wheat or those types of things, then we have contacts for those and we can, we can ping them.
So, do we want to be proactive and slap another meeting on the calendar sometime in the week of the 4th, just in case there's a delay in getting the information there for a delay in Lori reformatting everything? Because obviously, table of contents needs update, but you can't update until you have all the information.
Actually, her, her template, she's, she's probably fine because she just pops it in and then it automatically goes into the table of contents. And she, she works with, I can't remember the software, but it takes care of that sort of stuff. It's all information. She can put it together very quickly. She just needs to have the information.
Okay. So, then are we expected to vote on it, Margaret, next Monday, the 4th?
You would be expected to. Well, no, May 11th, May 11th you would be.
Oh, May 11th.
That's the same date that you would direct the immediate printing of it, too.
Yeah, but what if there's changes that need to be made? Oh, well. I know, I know.
Is this, I,
My, agenda for the next meeting. And it could be that it's all taken care of. We'll see. I actually thought it looked pretty good. There were, except for the missing information.
Correct.
My prior experience has been that the board has directed that the production, not that, not that my prior towns have mailed all the copies, but they've directed the production with or without the reports. So.
Right, right. If they're not in, then as you said, Peg, it goes.
Yep.
Right. So, just reminding them one more time and that's all we can do.
Okay.
Okay. Where are we? We're down to the, or do, do we want to take a vote on this? The, or just wait until next Monday? Wait? Okay. All right. So, we're down to the waiver of the town's right of first refusal.
Okay, so this is.
Property.
Okay. So, through the chair, this is, yep, this is the Wedge, Wedgeco, Web, Web Joe property, whatever, property on Lyman Road. And this initially was submitted to the board's office, but not in proper form. And they then, that was, Town Council determined that on March 25th, they immediately resubmitted the packet in proper form. Mary got the, the packet out for all local reviewers. The reviews have been received, and I am recommending that the board waive its right of first refusal on this property based on the feedback.
Motion to waive right of first refusal.
And seconded.
Okay. Comments, questions, or are we good? All right. We'll take a vote then. Keith, aye.
Waisaki, aye.
Don't I.
Okay, motion passes. Moving on to our new business, the request to write off aged and uncollectible ambulance billing accounts.
Yes, through the chair. There has been a lot of work that's gone into this because it's been many, many years in the making. So, I would like to defer to June, if I could please to, and Chief, to present, to present this.
Okay, June? Or Chief?
June, you're on mute. June, you're on mute.
There we go. There we go. Hello. Okay. I had done up a letter here requesting that the select board take into their consideration to write off the uncollectible ambulance receipts that are outstanding. to write off the uncollectible ambulance receipts that are outstanding due to the fact that they are, the statute of limitations is six years old. We have never done an official write-off of any of the ambulance receipts since we started billing back in '05. So, this is the first time we've actually written anything off. So, Chief Z, before he had left, he had actually sent a letter to you and requested some amounts to be written off. Based on the minutes, I'm not exactly sure on, on exactly how it was, was done, because there was a little bit of a question there. So, I'm just asking to have a definite vote to either approve or disapprove these amounts. I have them listed here by year. So, if there's any question on them, due to the HIPAA laws, I do not have any names or anything like that on this list. It is just incident date and incident numbers with run reports and dollar amounts. So, again, these are old ones. The statute of limitation has run out on these. We can't do anything about these legally. We do have a number of other ones that currently I am trying to, these are actually the old bills that we had under ComStar. We are now using Coastal. The, there are a few that are still open that I'm trying to work now with Coastal to see if we have actually filed the initial claim. Because a lot of times, if you can at least get the initial claim in, then you can actually do some follow-up work on trying to collect some of the things. Some of them have already been turned over to, I believe it's called First Financial, is the collection agency. So, I'm working, like I said, with Coastal to see what we can do, what we can't do. So, I'll have better answers for you on that. But as of right now, the total for all these years that go back to '05 through April 11th of 2014 comes to a grand total of 109,333.64.
So, June, I do believe we did vote previously, but in order to make this...
Clean?
Yes. We can do it again. It's not a problem. You had highlighted a couple of things, lines on there, and those were...
The ones that were highlighted had not been turned over to collections, for whatever reason. Some of them were, they were still waiting for information before they could actually do a final bill. Some of them were just held open for whatever reason. So, those did not go to a collection agency. All of the others have been to the actual collection agency. So, some attempts have been made to collect these funds.
Okay. And so, there were no attempts to collect the highlighted?
Well, attempts were originally made, but they didn't go over to an actual collection agency, if that makes sense.
Yep. All right. Questions from the board? Peg?
So, Chief and June, you know what my questions are going to be. What do we have? Obviously, the past is the past, you know, can't do anything about it. We move on. Going forward, what do we have in place to make sure that it gets billed? Someone's overseeing it, that there is oversight done on this, because I certainly don't want you to come back in, you know, years more, June, and say, oh, by the way, we need to write off another 100K, because the town could really use that money.
Chief, you want me to answer, or you want to do?
You, you start. You've been doing a good job so far.
I can, I can weigh in here and there.
You can weigh in when June starts.
Okay. Pretty much what it, thank you. Pretty much what it boils down to is that we have to remember that we started doing ambulance billing when the ambulance service was part-time, on-call, and they had just started to be paid volunteers. The ambulance runs at that time were a lot less in number. We were new at billing. Before that, we had never billed for an ambulance call. So, over the course of the years, things have grown, things have changed. Not to anybody's fault, and not to blame anyone in particular, for real, that it's been a process that's grown over the years. And unfortunately, the process on taking care of the billing has not. So, with Chief Clark's help, we've been re-looking at and going over our processes, our procedures as far as the actual initiation of the bills, the turnover of the information, the collection of information, the smoother communications and availability between the people who are actually collecting the data, who are submitting the information to the billing company, having it come back if we need to gather additional information. There's a procedures now in place where additional information can be received quickly, more up-to-date, and faster. So, hopefully, that process will be taken care of. The next round is Chief Clark has been looking into actual collection agencies. We have two, I guess, it's a little bit misunderstood, but we have a billing company. Our billing company is not a collection agency. They just gather the information, and they process the bills, and they actually bill out information to the insurance companies or to the patients. And they do just a number of follow-ups and additional mailings, but it is up to us to authorize the turnover to an actual collection agency. And that's what we're now working on, to see if we can get a smoother process and to be able to try to collect money as quickly as possible. I don't know if you want to add anything else?
I can. Well said, June. Thank you. And we've identified two, we sat it out, I sat it out with like six or seven vendors, as collection agencies narrowed it to four, made a little like a comparison sheet that I shared with Margaret and June, so that we can get together someday. And to be honest with you, I think with the COVID, it came in, and that was sent out just as we started dealing with the COVID. So, we have to kind of like reignite that, get that on the front burner again. And, but it has three really good ones, too, we were very comfortable with, that I would recommend. And it's like, let the finance people make that decision, which one they want to work with. And we've streamlined the process in the building. There's one person working with it. So, it's like, it's going well. And the other thing that you always got to remember, there's not an organization that runs the ambulances. It doesn't have some type of money that's uncollected. It's every organization, every ambulance service has it. You just want to attempt to minimize it as much as possible for your particular organization.
Okay. Does that help with any questions, Peg?
Oh, you know there'll be more, but that will work for now.
Okay. All right. Is there anything anybody else wants to, to add?
Or should we take...
Excuse me, through the chair, I was just going to, just going to reiterate what June and Chief both said. I think what we were lacking here, and it was nobody's fault, but I think what we were lacking here was a streamlined in-house administrative process that allowed for daily communications between personnel doing the runs, and the person that's actually processing those reports, and the ambulance billing agency, and insurance companies, and, you know, clients or patients. Now, we have that system in place. And so, well, with the addition of the collection agency, we'll be one step beyond. But we've actually managed to streamline the process in-house. And so, we're looking forward to continuing on this trend, that we can be, we can be that much more effective.
Is there a written policy on this, you know, just for the steps? Because with anything, you never know if the key people that are in place are going to be in place six months, nine months, 12 months, and I would hate to start from scratch again.
Yeah, so I, Chief, I know Chiefs, and June, and I are all working on the administrative policy piece of this. I, I have to say that a few years ago, I think that the board adopted an ambulance write-off policy. I think that that policy can actually be, should actually be revisited to make it much more concise. I think it's, it's extremely detailed and probably a bit, a bit too much. So, that's something that we bring, that we bring back to.
So, part of the process will be to revisit this at X, like, rather than waiting until 2005 until 2019?
This needs to be, yeah, this needs, yeah, every year thing.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
A motion to approve the write-offs.
Agreed, seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anything else further to be said? Margaret?
It's, it needs to be understood that there is always going to be some degree of write-offs. Not to this extent, but there's always going to be some degree of write-offs, whether it's because of hardship, because a person's not insured, because a person has moved, it can't be found. There's always going to be something. But if we stay on this on an annual basis, we'll be able to control it. I just wanted to add that.
It's our healthcare system. That would help. How will we get on that?
Okay. Got a motion and a second? All in favor, say, well, Keith, aye?
I think Lisa said yes. Stone, aye?
Okay. But the vote is unanimous. Thank you very much for all your hard work, Chief, and June, and Margaret.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
June, this must be quite a relief for you to have those years out.
I was going to say yes, because now we can start working on the outstanding ones that we can possibly collect, so.
Isn't that annoying as an accountant, too, to have like those things that you can't go away?
Yeah, because at least now, we don't have to look at those again.
Yeah.
Good job.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
For your help.
All right, we're going to move on to the American Legion's special event, the parade for Memorial Day. I think, Margaret, did you want to fill us in, or?
There's a request from Commander Robert Rainville of the American Legion Post 162. He was looking for feedback from the board on the special permit, the special event application by May 4th, in order to prepare for Memorial Day services. Now, the board previously approved some special event permits that were conditioned on the, the emergency declaration being lifted and permission from Chief Galvin to hold it. So, at this point, unless the board wants to be consistent with its prior votes on those special event applications, my only other recommendation would be to say no to the special event application. But I'd hate to, I'd hate to eliminate Memorial Day observances entirely. I mean, they, there needs to be, yes, I'm sorry. I think there needs to be something.
He still intends to do a very, a low-key one without a crowd. They still intend to honor the veterans, but just, they're looking for a traditional, what they call a parade permit, or what we call a special events permit. But they, he was kind of aware of this when he asked this a month ago, and Chief Galvin was saying that the talk amongst the chiefs is to not, not really have these in other communities right now.
Yeah, I had heard that a lot of the Memorial Day type things have been off or canceled. And we also have, have put us, put, yeah, pushed out our town meeting and our election. I just think that, and I have the feeling that the emergency is not going to be lifted by the 4th. So, that's my only comment, I guess.
Real, realistically, I don't think it, crowds are going to be gathering on Memorial Day. It doesn't make sense.
Right.
So, then my recommendation would be to refer to Chief Galvin's comments on this, and just say that the Memorial Day event won't be as traditionally held.
Yep. I, would you like a motion on that?
I think so. Feedback, didn't they?
Excuse me?
We just wanted feedback from us.
Is that, is that what they were looking for?
I, I think so.
They traditionally get something in writing from the board approving the request. So, it might be, it could even just be an email, I suppose, back.
I think we're all in agreement. Peg, am I right?
Correct.
Then why don't you go ahead? I would recommend through the chair that the board just vote on, on it, then.
Okay.
What exactly are we voting on? That, no parade?
Not, yeah, not to allow the traditional Memorial Day events.
So, moved.
And unfortunately, seconded.
And so, we have a motion and a second. We'll begin a vote. Keith, aye?
Aye, aye.
Stone, aye.
Just another sick day during the pandemic. All right. And I believe we do not have the reserve fund transfer request this evening, so we're moving on to the board questions and comments. Look at that smile.
I need my notepad. I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring my softball glove here, so I can catch the curveball.
Could you? All right. Just get a fishing net. Get the net from Chief, so you can just keep catching them as I throw them. No, I will, I will let Lisa or Chris go first.
I get nothing.
Okay.
You're good, Lisa?
Actually, I, I only have one.
Oh, good, good, good.
Just one. So, last week, part of the week, I had brought up to you about a sign in the center of town on First Parish Church property, allowing us to put up a banner of thanks. I know that there was concerns about social distancing and touching and things like that. So, spoke to the resident who's donating this, out of her own pocket. I got the proof today. It's going to be really slick. There's going to be a nice pre-printed sign that will go in the center of town on the church property. There's leftover pieces of vinyl, per se, from the, from the sign that I was going to reach out to Highway Guy Dave, and like he did for the scarecrows, put up stakes in the center of town on the church property. And people could come and pick up like hearts, the vinyl hearts, and go home and decorate them, and then bring them up and put them on church property. The banner should be arriving next week or so. I've reached out to Tom Andrew and the rest of the council at First Parish Church, kept them up to date, thanked them again for the use of their property. So, hopefully, within a week or so, there should be finally a nice banner from Berlin, thanking all the essential workers. So, Chief, your crew, you know, Tom, his crew, Highway, and everybody else who gets out there every day to put their services on the line to make our lives a little bit easier. So, it's coming.
That'll be, that'll be very nice, and very much...
It will be very nice.
Very much appreciated.
Yes, it was such a generous gift from, from the resident in town. The person asked for nothing, you know, just to say, we need to do this for all the essential workers, whether those that live in town and those who drive through town and support town. So, I very much applaud her for her generosity to the town.
Okay. If there are no more board questions or comments, then I don't believe we are having an executive session. So, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.